Meeting of the Athens City Planning Commission. One member is absent, however, a quorum has been established. Are there any people in the audience who are going to be addressing the Planning Commission? If you raise your right hand if you're going to be addressing. And do you solemnly swear to tell the truth to the Planning Commission as you know it? Thank you very much. Disposition of minutes. Does anybody have any questions or additions or changes they'd like to make in here? And is there a motion to accept the minutes?
I say move.
Second?
Second.
And all approved?
Aye.
I will abstain because it was absent.
Okay, we have one abstention, one absentee, and three vote members voting to approve. Let's see, first case, number 16-02, 7746 North Blackburn Road, wireless telecommunications, special use permit. Would you care to address that?
Yes, finishers, good afternoon. What we have here is just a tower, and that, they're just redoing the antennas, replacing and upgrading the equipment. I've reviewed the plans, and I recommend an approval.
An existing tower?
It's an existing tower, correct.
Any questions or comments?
Just that Rick drafted for this, so this would be 1602 on the bottom. It basically had the summary, they changed the height or footprint, had the structural analysis.
Correct, they had the structural analysis, and as it carries, AT&amp;T Mobility. It's a 300-foot self-supported tower. And the proper supporting documentation provided. AT&amp;T is proposing to modify the equipment and perform routine maintenance at the existing telecom site. No change to the height or footprint of the tower will be made. The report provides positive review for structural analysis of wind and foundation requirements for the site. The modifications are to include the removal of six old power wave antennas and replacing them with six new Andrew upgrades, and three additional octal lucent antennas at the 255-foot level. The improvement will basically allow them to mount a row of six antennas and three additional antennas at the same level.
And the older equipment will be removed from the site?
That's correction.
I move to approve based on the structural analysis report and the report from the co-director.
My second.
My second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous with one abstention. Next would be case number 16-03, 39 Water Tower Drive, wireless telecommunications, special use permit.
All right, sir, yes, request for modification to 39 Water Tower Drive in Athens. Site name's Ohio University. This is their water tower. It's 149-foot monopole. Proper summarizing documentation was provided for the existing Calcom site. No change to the height or the footprint of the tower will be made. The report provides positive review for the structural analysis of wind and foundation requirements for the site. Modifications are to include the removal of six old lucent antennas and replacing them with six upgraded and six additional antennas of similar size. This improvement will basically allow them to mount a row of six antennas with the additional six antennas being mounted underneath them in addition. The improvement will allow also for the COAX to be installed inside the pole shaft. The additional reviews that these six additional antennas will not add any additional stress to the tower.
I must say, because this is on property owned by Ohio University, I have just provided them with the information, so I would, unless there's other questions, recommend approval with the condition that Ohio University approves the modifications to this antenna that's on their property.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion with the condition of approval.
I will second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Again, four votes yes and one absentee. Case number 16-04, 599 East Park Drive. Do you care just to reintroduce that again, and then we can have them come up and speak?
Yes, sir. Summary is, for, the purpose of the site is for the construction of a signal-story office building with parking. The building will be 1,600 square feet with a use of 15,600 square feet. The parking will consist of 75 spaces with an additional four designated handicap spaces. The project is to be used as a medical facility consisting of an adult care section with a small retail space. The site is located in an M-zone, making the proposed use permissible. Projected hours of operation are nine to five with possible extended evening operations. The architects are BDT. The property name is Mundine Healthcare. The property status is under Title 41. Existing zone is M. And we recommend approval upon the conditions stated in the packet with agreements.
Okay, are there questions or comments?
I have questions, so I'd like to...
Mr. Bitner, do you care to come up to the podium, if you want to also, and just please state your names? Mr. Bitner, the company that you represent, and I guess your, the address that you live at also.
Okay. My name's Nicholas Bitner, I'm at BDT, the architect on the project. I am a local Athens resident, 24 Canterbury Drive.
Nick Mundine, Mundine Healthcare, 22 Briarwood Drive.
Go ahead, Paula.
The bike path. I mean, I think we've made it clear that the vehicles have to stop for the bike path, not, not the bike path having to stop to yield to vehicles crossing. So there's a real concern. Have you received that information?
We just got the information handed to us just a few minutes ago, and I did see that the city engineer had noted that the bike path should be noted as a bike path, and I think we had it noted as a bike lane, to install a bike path crossing sign with a yield sign above the bike path sign. So that would be...
Meaning?
He had suggested yield, but are you saying that you prefer it be a stop?
Well, I'd have to do, I mean, I would of course follow the city engineers on this MutCAD, as he calls it, manual uniform traffic control device, but understanding that the vehicles are the ones that have to yield to the users of the bike path.
Yeah, and that's what we're saying, is the vehicle, we will change it so the vehicles do yield. We weren't going to put a stop, but just treat it like a yield sign, like, similar, I think that's how it is at the Pepsi plant in that, the, what's the, the McBee Building.
And, you know, with 75 parking spaces, that sounds like there's, this would really be an increase in the movement of vehicles. The other question I had was that little easement roadway that you have is in really poor condition. Is the intent to repair that?
Yeah, the intent, from what it was, to pave all the way to what we consider East Park Drive.
When we met last time, we had a discussion about this easement. Have you found the actual easement, and have been able to see what's recorded in terms of the actual easement access to that property?
Yeah, and that is, we did have that, it's just, it's, that was, the one that we didn't have was the Hawking Conservancy.
Okay.
Was, that went over to ours, and that's what we're changing with the deed, is that we're gonna, with the plan that we gave, that we're documenting what that easement is. Before it was just sort of hand-drawn, the last time this was sold in 2008. Just if I could step up.
So did you provide it in this?
We did not provide a written description, so yes, that's what we will get the deed changed on this one here. Looking at it.
I was looking at someone from the last time. The bigger one.
Oh, I see. Yeah, this, this is the one that we'll get a written description of and have the deed changed for the Hawking, because this was never, it was always, again, how we have it shown, like a visual, but never provided as a written description.
So there's nothing on record?
Other than it being hand-drawn last deed, which counts as a record, but it's just unclear, it's very vague, you know, you'd have to take a scale and try to determine where that is laid out.
So you're talking about, what exists is a kind of a makeshift road that goes around the current containment, that impound lot?
Right.
There's not even a road as such.
That's in my address, yeah.
It's just, I think it's just because it's a gravel lot, and then it's just lawn, like, it's just allowing them access to that lawn area if they need to get maintenance trucks over to cut the grass on the Conservancy.
Is the one for the actual, any roadway, recorded?
Yes, that's been recorded way, I don't know when the original description comes back, but that was prior to that 2008 sale.
One of the, one of the things that are occurring, and maybe you're aware of this from...
I might have it here, my document, maybe.
Ohio University is in the process of divesting, as they call it, of their property, save from the bike path, what would be north, the bike path towards East State Street.
Of course.
So if they have ownership in here, does that mean that this, this recorded easement or what have you goes along with the sale? How do you protect that access, I guess?
Ohio University, none of their property, the strip, I guess, to the east, none of that has any easement or right-of-way, like, requirements on, on the parcel that we have. So basically, if they were to divest that and somebody wanted to develop that, they would have to figure out their own easement.
Yeah. Is there any way you can...
Do I interest in that? That says it's Ohio University.
Yeah, maybe. Is there any way to put the site map on this?
Yes. Former BNO Railroad.
Yeah, so, let me, I'll hold this up on the main camera, you can see it so it can be identified. So this, this is what's considered East Park Drive in this upper corner. It's the same drive that is used to access the sewer treatment plant. So then this easement is what, there is a written legal description of in the deed to the property.
Did you say there is?
Yeah.
Okay.
There is, and I can provide that document, I mean, I just got it off the Otter's side, I apologize for not bringing it with me, but there is a deed for this easement. What there is not a written description of is the easement that is provided from this, the parcel that is being developed to the, I guess that would be the west, for Hawking Conservancy. That is just drawn in that 2008 transfer, basically a couple lines on the surface.
But to get back to the roadway, via that easement, it was a permanent easement? I think we asked this last time, that's why I'm curious, we would like to see that.
Okay, yeah, I apologize for not including, it is a permanent easement. Yeah, I mean, it's a deed.
What's, now what's this to, this little side, that's just to give them lawn?
That's just to access the Hawking Conservancy.
For the lawn stuff and stuff like that.
Yeah, and I think they own this parcel as well as the parcel along the rivers, I think they, since it's continuous, they just go through the one parcel to access the other.
Now, does Ohio University also pick up on the other side of your property?
Yeah.
So basically, you're kind of a peninsula in there, as, with just that one road leading out?
Yeah.
Okay.
But there's not, we could not find any easements or descriptions of easements to access that property from this one.
Have you spoken with anybody at Ohio University yet, as far as their facilities management or planning or whatever that, okay.
No, they've never contacted you about requesting an easement, have they?
No, no, it was kind of, yeah, our concern is this parcel and not Ohio University's access, since they, yeah.
They seem to find a way.
As Athens stands right now, if I'm not mistaken, Ohio University owns adjoining parcels further west, further east, and further north, which the, where the mall is and all that, so they own that real estate, so they would have real estate today that's continuous and contiguous.
And I also...
So they can access from other, other places besides here, correct?
When, the bike path is under the ownership of Ohio University, correct?
That's right.
So they have to buy a permanent easement.
So isn't that their easement to all those properties?
It might not be permanent, it could be 200 years, I'd have to look that up. Pardon me?
Wouldn't that qualify as their easement to all the properties?
Well, they may not need an easement, if it's undeveloped, we would have to stay to that.
All the way around.
That's why I'm asking that, is, in order to see that, you know, permanent recorded easement, to even access their property, that property.
I think, I think that's, Christie, more kind of talking about a potential OU issue for OU to address, because they, as I understand it, they do own the property where are things like, what is it, Midas or Monroe Muffler is, and other places for access back in there. And again, but I, so I, I understand, Service Safety Director, which is your, your question, which is a valid question, I think that that's a bigger picture question for OU with what they are trying to divest themselves of and ways of accessing the riverfront parcels.
And then the last was, of course, compliance with the floodplain regulations. I think the planner's provided everything that you need in his review here.
We've been in communication on this.
Earlier.
I think Mr. Mundine and I probably started talking about this nine months or 12 months ago, actually. I'm, what I've told them, and what I'll tell you, is, I'm, I'm very confident that everything that they're doing is going to meet the floodplain requirements. There will be documentation they will have to provide before it can be signed off on, but the pillar structure that they're, that they're proposing means that very little, if any, fill will be utilized at this location. They will have to provide engineering documentation to show that there's no change or impact to the floodway, but I'm confident that they can do it based on what they proposed, but I'll still need to review that prior to development occurring. And I'm okay with, if the Planning Commission's goal or desire is to approve, I'm okay with approving with the condition that those be met down the road.
There's a LOMAR pending on this?
No, there would not need to be a LOMAR if, unless, you would not need to change the map, oh, I'm sorry, let me back up. There's two things, yeah. We have preliminary mapping that FEMA issued back in March of 2013 now, it's been three years, I think.
Oh, okay, so this is part of the MAP organization?
Yeah, and if that mapping ever becomes law, this, this location actually is no longer in the floodway. For permitting today, we have to treat it as if it's in the floodway, and so the development that they've given us meets those requirements. Now, they'll have to document that, and they're, they're working with an engineer who's going to provide the calculations to show that it doesn't have any impact on the floodway, and provided that the engineering shows that, then we would, there would be no issue with an approval.
Okay, so this, the plan as you see it is, even if the map changes?
If it never changes, yeah, we're, I'm treating it as, I'm treating it based on the mapping today.
Okay.
Yeah, not, not the mapping that's may come in the future.
Right, but that future mapping would only make this a safer bet?
Exactly.
Okay.
And I've had communications actually with FEMA district representatives in Chicago, asking questions about how to treat this, and I've talked with representatives in Columbus at ODNR as well.
Okay.
And we're all on the same page about how to proceed.
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were sort of in a waiting game for a while, trying to determine if this was ever going to change, and then we sort of, at that, you know, after waiting almost a year, I think decided, well, let's just go for it as if it were never to change. And so it does create a slightly different building, yes, it's, you know, it's raised on a platform, but where we are filling on the site is just being removed from another section of the site. So in other words, it won't change the flood capacity, volume of the... And that fill is not going into the floodway, right?
Right, correct.
Okay.
And using that platform structure that you're proposing anyway, would actually be, that's a good practice in a floodplain regardless of whether it's a floodway or, or on the flood fringe. So very minimal impact to any other property owners in that situation, which is good.
And lastly, I'm not settled on that address. We definitely know that we're looking at an East Park Drive, but I don't know about the number, how's that for...
Yeah, it's too close to the, the other one, maybe we should, yeah, right now the auditor treats is 559 East State Street.
But that, that goes through the internal review for, basically for emergency response, so...
Right, yeah, we don't, we're not wedded to any address, it's not like it has to be an East States Drive or East State Street, it's just, we'd just like to know address before opening it.
For business cuts.
It will help with getting AP out there.
Already, right?
So that'll be code enforcement to...
They send it around, but it goes to police and fire, and so that would...
Fire, the fire department's recommendations are on page six, as of...
I understand, I do know that we also have a lab on that that has a much smaller number that's not, you know, a little bit of a walking distance, so...
You're talking address again?
Yes.
Yeah, it creates a lot of infill, doesn't it? In terms of parcels?
Yes, right.
Small homes.
So where the fire chief has said that the address is to be 599, is it...
We have not addressed this.
No, we have not addressed this.
I'm back to that.
Yeah, he did noting on foresee about adding a ramp, and we did include that in that revision, so he might have looked at the one prior to.
Is this the, the one that we received today, is that's the revision?
Is the road going in and out, is that currently like a one lane or two?
It's one and a half.
One and a half, yeah, it's probably an 18-foot.
So a fire truck can get in there and use it, okay.
No, this, this is not the...
Okay. This is the one from last time, so I know it's not, this is the one when it came last time.
Yeah.
Mr. Logue, is there any type of, as far as like, if he's saying it's like a one and a half lane, basically, is there any type of regulation that, or minimum, he's supposed to be addressing there as far as, with the business?
Well, we probably need to double-check what the, if there's description of the width of the easement, that's going to be the first thing to make sure that, if it's, it might be only an 18-foot easement or a 20-foot, but from a driveway standpoint, as long as it's not being treated as a public road where, you know, additional spurs can come off of it or additional curb cuts, then I think 18 or 20 feet should be sufficient. There's been commercial uses here for, and I don't, I'm not aware of it being an issue, especially if everybody's driving it.
I don't think they have the traffic they're anticipating with this either, really.
That's true, right, but I would treat it the same way you would treat, you know, if the, if the driveway lanes in the parking lot are acceptable, I think it would be acceptable. But I guess, in short, to answer your question though, if there's anything in subdivision regulations, I would need, I would like to confirm that, RJ. Okay, I can do that.
And they still need to go to shade tree, but I think that's it?
Yeah.
That's all the forward pressure.
We did document the shade trees on the site plan, so we just need to apply further approval. Yeah, so the stairway and the ramp has been addressed on that revision, and I, either...
What did you do?
We ended up adding it on the sidewalk, so it basically came out, there was a landing, and then it went down. Where that sidewalk was, we took it out and put it in as a ramp.
You're referring to the southeast corner?
Yeah, that southeast corner.
It's on attachment three, I think.
I didn't think it was on it, it was...
And with the two changed on that, we added that ramp, and we also adjusted where the dumpster was located based on one of the...
Okay.
I'm going to the co-director.
We do have it, Nicholas.
Okay.
So, yeah. Well, I see a number of conditions.
Yeah.
So you think that's the start of a move, Nick? So recommending approval, with the conditions cited within the staff report, including shade tree, floodplain compliance, which is the future, you know, complying with all the other comments here from engineering and public works, fire, which sounds like you already addressed, police just wanted, you know, identify that bike path crossing.
Right.
Address, commitment to repair the roadway for your people traveling through that, and we really need to see that policement that has been recorded in the language. Both of them?
Well, what...
Do we need to see both of them? I'm asking the commission members. The one that's traveling through the land owned by Ohio University?
As well as the Hawking Conservancy's easement, which was hand-drawn.
That seems reasonable. Yeah, we want to provide a full description in the deed for that one.
Am I missing anything?
Christie, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I don't think so.
Did you get the signage, Paula?
I didn't.
The bike path sign?
Well, I said come...
Hello and welcome to City Source, I'm Cody Walker.
And I'm Catherine Seyfried, and here's your weather, traffic, and news updates.
Okay, and all approved?
Aye.
So we have four members, yes, and one abstention.
Your time is always appreciated, thank you.
Thank you. There is no communications today, report from the city planner, Mr. Logue?
I have a few things this afternoon. The first, I know I've been providing some updates on the sustainability planning that the Sustainability Commission's working on. We should have a rough draft completed, or about 90% completed, at our regular meeting schedule for this Tuesday evening, we're going to review it. We're, we're basically setting up our baseline data collection right now, most of our narrative's completed, and we are going to be likely scheduling some sort of a public open house meeting sometime in the next 30 to 60 days. And then, prior to that, we'll distribute a draft for the public, if anybody wants to read it and give comment, distribute it to Planning Commission Council, anybody who may be interested to provide us some feedback. And then, once we have that feedback, and once we've gone through public workshop, we'll take all that into consideration and try to put together a final draft and present that to Athens City Council. We're in mid-April right now, early April, so we're probably looking at something in the June timeframe to go to council. So that's really encouraging that we're almost done with that. It's been a lot of work, a lot of volunteer work, and it's taken us a little bit longer than we expected, but I think we're getting a good final, final project done. The county is also working on some sustainability planning right now, so myself and a couple other members of the commission are going to at least go to some of the meetings and help them out with some of that stuff. I'm not sure how far they're going to get with that, I think they're calling it a framework, so I'm not sure exactly what that means.
What was that, Paula?
The Athens County, the county commissioners are working on some sustainability, a sustainability plan on some level right now, but we're early in discussions on that. I attended a workshop last Tuesday with some representatives from the Athens County City Health Department in Columbus. Some representatives from the health department received some grant funding to do active transportation planning, which includes looking at bicycle and pedestrian issues, and there's a consulting firm that's basically on retainer to do some planning for grant awardees, several of them around the state of Ohio, and Athens was one of them, that they'll be coming into Athens at some point, either this year or in early 2017, 2017 already, to assist us with some complete streets-type planning, some policy guidance, and looking at how to do better bicycle and pedestrian planning throughout Athens County as well as in Athens City. So that was a really good meeting we had, and we're going, we have a follow-up phone call with the cons...
Total info, sports.
I was, I had the privilege of attending the, the National Conference of the American Planning Association. I gave a presentation along with two other people on Sunday morning to an audience of about 300 people, where we talked about the essence of Athens planning, really focusing on how to do arts engagement and cultural engagement in small towns. It was really well-received, and I thought we did a pretty good job, and a lot of people afterwards who were unfamiliar with Athens were really interested to see Athens, so I guess that was good too, so, some good PR. And I'm getting caught up from being out of town for two and a half days for the conference, so lots of emails still to be reviewed, but everything else is good.
Any questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Saroyes?
Yes, I am trying to get caught up myself. Right off the bat, we have the Dairy Bar... Right off the bat, we have the Dairy Bar approached me with a preliminary view of an expansion they're doing about a thousand, a little over thousand, five thousand square feet. They're probably going to have to go for a variance of parking issues. They have approximately thirty-seven acres of green that they can work with. I have several other things that I'm being, I'm looking at that may require some variances. I'm reviewing those, and hopefully we'll come into, in the next few weeks, we'll come forward with that. We're going to be doing Palmer Fest, of course, this weekend, so we'll be out in force. And that's pretty much it I have for now.
Thank you. Any questions or comments here? All right, thank you very much. Let's see, there is no one in the audience to address the Planning Commission. Announcements and other business, anything anybody would like to add in here? Okay, our next meeting will be April twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen, here in the Sathen City Hall. Thank you very much. With our business concluded, the meeting stands adjourned.